To start these meetings with a prayer. It's a very simple prayer. Whether most of towners use it. I would like to have the vote. All in favor, say aye.
First you try to get a motion. Get a motion, a second, and then a discussion.
A motion and a prayer after the place.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. Aye. We'll start at next meeting.
Next meeting. Come on, got it.
Well, we're going to say that right now, at least to have it.
Okay. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless us all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus, amen.
I need a motion to pass the consent agenda. Does anybody here want to say anything? Anybody have any comments for the... Need a motion to pass consent agenda?
Still move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'm going to turn it over to Kim now.
All right. Number one, the digester, number one repair status. Lucas, you're here, right?
Yeah.
There you are. Do you have an update for us, please?
Oh. We're working forward now with a little bit of change of direction from our last direction. We're not going to be doing the bidding so much. We're going to be looking at Co-Stars quotes, but it's going to be a little bit more of an informal bidding process. We're still going to look for quotes under the Co-Stars program, giving multiple vendors that are registered with the Department of General Services under the Co-Stars program a chance to provide a quote. What this does is it streamlines the situation so that we can bring forward the program a little faster than preparing documents, preparing plans, specifications, and do a formal bidding. So we're working towards the digester project in an escalated schedule to bring that to fruition a lot faster than we typically would under a formal bidding process.
Yes, our goal is here over the next month to finish reaching out to contractors to get the digester roof off and the hundreds of thousands of gallons of sludge out so we can figure out what the reasoning was for the clog and the breakdown on the digester, and then we can start analyzing it with our path moving forward for best fit. We're making some headway in our goal is for next meeting.
Good.
Next being, we should have pricing to get the digester roof off and get it cleaned out. So we'll be able to, rather than three to six months of preparing everything and getting it out, we should have numbers and should be able to hit the ground here within the next couple of months.
And that would set up the ability to do an internal inspection, obviously, to find out what went wrong inside. Simultaneous to this whole activity, though, we're doing a study to determine whether we're going to possibly go down a change in digestion process at the plant, whether it might be cost-effective to go to an aerobic digester instead of an anaerobic digester. And we're going to be doing that simultaneously as we get to that ability to do an inspection. Obviously, we'd like to see what's in there so that we can evaluate the costs of the two alternatives that we'll present to you later on. So there's a lot of things going simultaneously here.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Because in our task order, we're doing the study simultaneously with just cleaning out here, okay?
If I may, I'd like to skip to new and unfinished business, go to number 11, since the Eads team is here. That's the Eads contract. That's this document in here, the seventy-some pages, that we had reviewed. Our solicitor came back with changes. Eads made those changes for us, and now it's just ready for you guys to approve. So we let it get that approved while they're here. We'll get it signed tonight and get it up to tomorrow.
I have a question, Kim.
Yeah.
Can you answer me?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so where are we at with bond council and getting some funding for all this? Is this something Eads is going to bring forth at some point? And when will we see this? Or where are we going with this?
There's different options on the funding of this. There's the grants we still apply for. There's three or four open now. We haven't done them yet because we don't know what the costs are yet. We're looking at the county for some possible ARPA money. We've talked about Penn Vest, but Penn Vest isn't a valid option until we're ready to put shovel into dirt. So they have to go through the whole process, get the permits and everything before we can apply anything to Penn Vest. You can apply for a bank loan, which we have approval from one of the banks in town, anytime we want.
All right, so we probably should do for at least... Can we get that started?
Which process?
The process of getting the money to get this, get shovels in the ground. I had to, you know, we waited how long now? I think, you know, Eads is doing what they're doing, but I think we need to get funding in place now, and then if the grants come in, we pay the funding back from the grants. But I think, I think we need to move on this.
Okay.
I think we need to wait for the quotes to come back next month.
Yeah, we need to know how much we're going to get a loan or whatever. You can't do anything until we get the cost.
I know. We'll wait for the quotes until we get them. So the one document we do have, Matt, is the original quote, which came from Gannett Fleming. We do have that, and that can be used as a basis, and that's the one I use for the county. So that is one avenue that we are prepared to move forward with.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, wait, we still got to finish. Someone make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, Lucas, we'll get it signed tonight, get it to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you, guys.
And the other two task orders have already been completed. We'll get those too as well. The important dates, basically from now till the next council meeting. I'd like to highlight the 29th of March, Good Friday, because that is a borough holiday. It's also National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Number three, PSAB Annual Conference is still two through five June. We do have several council members wishing to attend this. We also have three of our, two of our superintendents in HR going down for a day to talk to the vendors down there because there's always a ton of vendors down there, the PMRS for HR and other entities we actually do face-to-face work with. Monthly work session discussion. I had a request to add these two dates on here, the 3rd of April at 5:30 p.m., the 25th of April at 5:30 p.m. You can see them on the screen. Doesn't involve money or contracts, so we could just add them on here. It's open for discussion for council, whether you want to move forward with this or not.
I'll make a motion to move forward with it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Okay, I'll get them advertised. Handicap parking spot fee, that's also covered in new and unfinished business. We'll skip that one for now. Community center requirements. The community center has had some issues recently. We just got the roof repaired on it. That should fix that issue, but the freezer down there just died too. We do have a regular refrigerator freezer type down there that actually came from the pool. The possibility is that may have to go back to the pool because it's where it came from, but city has offered us a freezer. And maybe we'll just take that freezer and put that at the pool. So either one, I'll get that worked out, and then we'll go from there. I don't think there's any money requirements asked for the community center at this time. We can hold off on that stuff. All right. Fire department, Heritage, they submitted two grant requests recently, so good luck to them. One was for, I believe, an engine, and the other one was basically for SEPA, BEPE, I believe. Chapter 24 for review. That's a hard copy I put in front of each council member, and anybody wants a copy, you can come and see me. Basically, it's chapter 24, which is the fire department. The fire department merged from three stations to two, and that's pretty much what the focus of this is. The second focus, the secondary one, is the fire chief position because it talks in there specifically how you appoint the new fire chief. Because Bob Barlat resigned after ten excellent years here in the borough. Thanks, Bob. And so we're just moving forward with that. So when you guys get a chance, take a look at it. You can scribble on, email me, whatever, and then we'll start our discussions through the next law ordinance meetings or these work sessions as we move forward. Number nine, there's a mass casualty training workshop, 23 and 24 March at Nifflin County High School. That's basically for the police department and fire department, if you'd like attending. And I think Dave already knows about it, I believe Bob Douglas knows about it too, so. Number 10, we have to vote to discuss this one because it involves money. It was added after the agenda was advertised.
I make a motion to discuss the FAME EMS funding.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We're going to discuss FAME EMS funding.
Oh, okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, I was asked by the mayor to have a meeting with FAME EMS. Today, I had a meeting with Pat Shoup to talk about some of FAME EMS needs and borough being provided by, or funding provided by the borough. We had a very active discussion about what their needs were and the financial situation of the borough right now. We came to an agreement, or an understanding, I should say, that we wanted to bring the council, that we would reduce the funding for this year to 22,500. That is half of what we were planning on allocating due to financial headwinds that we're facing. What we also discussed is more of a long-term solution for funding for EMS, and that is adjusting the millage for the specialty tax for EMS. What we would like to do, I would like to make a motion for both of these items. One would be adjusting the funding for this year to 22,500 total for the year, and the other motion would be adjusting the millage for a total tax collection of $45,000. Right now, we're only collecting about $11,000 a year. What we've been doing in the past is making up that deficit from either ARPA or the general fund. So what we want to do is make that right. We recognize their contributions to the community, and we want to give them the funding that they need. And so I guess I'll start with a motion to...
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion first to increase the millage for the tax year 2025 to collect $45,000 for EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
I need to know what the millage rate is.
Yeah, I mean, probably what you want to do is maybe direct staff to calculate that millage amount, and then when you adopt your, you know, your fee, your tax ordinance at the end of the year, up that EMS tax to hit the number that it needs to be.
What we can do is, let me make a motion to investigate what the current millage is, and then we'll discuss it in our workshop, and then we'll bring this up at the next council meeting for the year 2025 millage rates.
Oh, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All right. I'd also like to make a motion to readjust the allocation for this year to FAME EMS to 22,500. That was previously 45,000. And again, that's to help with some of the financial headwinds that the borough is facing at this time.
It's been a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Summer, have you mailed the checks yet?
The first one.
So you mailed one check so far?
Just $8,000.
Okay. I can approve my portion right now. You go to the fire chief.
Fire chief? Good evening. Month of February, this department responded to 31 total calls. City of Lattar had 17 calls, 13 in-town, 4 out-of-town, 1 medical, 2 fire, vehicle fires, 1 carbon monoxide, 1 brush fire, 2 structural fires, 2 wires down, 2 gas leaks, 1 transfer assignment, transfer assignment, excuse me, 1 MVA, 1 public service, 1 automatic fire alarm, and 1 false alarm. Heritage responded 14 calls, 11 in-town, 3 out-of-town, 2 medical, 2 vehicle fires, 1 carbon monoxide, 2 brush fires, 3 fires, 2 gas leaks, 1 automatic fire alarm, and 1 false alarm. On that, last month, we had a department training down at Heritage where the city came down. We put everything in one station, let everybody crawl around, everything, look at new things that we had done. We had over 40 people participating in that training. Earlier in the month, the city held a CPR class, refresher, and for new, and we had 27 people. So either people were tired of sitting in the house and being cold, or, you know, we're getting, moving along. We had talked about last evening, I'm going to invite the convention committee to a fire committee meeting next month so they can try to cipher what is going on with everything as far as bills paid, you know, the total outcome, pretty much. We can't get any kind of a definite answer on what actually the convention made. Last thing, also, I'm going to talk and have a officers meeting with my guys in April, and with the help of Rex, we're going to take over the fire inspections for the Borough of Louistown. We're going to start that. We're going to divvy it out between everybody, and hopefully, with the help Caitlin and Rex, we can give us guys in the direction, and hopefully, we can get that off and running in June. Now, lastly, obviously, you got a little bit of money back from FAME EMS. Well, I have 26 sets of turnout gear between now and the end of the year that will be out of service. So what I'm asking is just, you know, we need 11 sets as soon as we can get it at $3,248 apiece. So it'd be five for the city, five for Heritage, and unfortunately, one for myself, and mine's going out too. The total bill would be $35,728. This new gear is called ricochet gear. It is locally made. We used to go with Globe. It's just a manufacturer. Their turnaround time is astronomical. The city just got six sets of this gear, and there's a lot of the paid departments that are going to this gear. Their turnaround was six weeks. So obviously, I'm not a financial person, but I'm asking if we can find some monies to get that gear because, like I said, after it's done, the liability on the Borough of Louistown of one of my guys get hurt at any kind of a scene, they're not covered.
Mr. President, may I respond to his request here at this time?
Sure.
Okay, I've talked to some people in the committee, and we're in council, and we do have ARPA money left, and that total of 35, whatever, can be handled out of the ARPA money without a problem. And still have some ARPA money left over. So if I can at this time, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to get the fire department...
You can't, Bob, because this issue came up after the agenda was advertised. So you have to vote to discuss it, and then you can move forward.
All right.
So it's number 17 on the new and unfinished business, so you can make a motion to discuss it.
All right.
To add it. You make the motion to add it.
Make a motion to add it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add it to the...
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye. Thank you.
You can discuss it now. You're free to discuss it and vote whoever you want to.
Okay, now?
Yeah, you can. It's a state put this rule in, was it last year, Mark? It's nothing we can control. It's a new law by the state.
So now you would make a motion to pay that money out of the ARPA funds, and if it's second, you can go to discussion.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to put the motion out on the floor to go ahead and purchase the gear that the chief requested and be paid for out of the ARPA.
Motion, second.
I have a question. What about the, you're getting 11 units?
Yes.
And so what? Or is that meaning only 11 people are going to be able to play fire?
No, that's going to bring everybody else up to the standard. We have people in gear that has not reached the 10-year limit. Turnout gear has a 10-year limit, whether it's worn or not. Once it reaches that 10 years, it is not able to be used for interior firefighting.
That is correct. I do know that for a fact.
So that's just, we have 26 sets, and we actually have a couple of guys right now that are in expired gear.
Okay.
So once we get this, we should be up a snuff that everybody in the department that is an interior firefighter will have the proper equipment to handle any type of emergency.
Okay.
Sorry if I didn't explain that better.
Now, you have the motion, Bob. I just want to make sure we get the facts here. It's for ARPA.
Yes.
Because the money does have to be spent by, or committed by the end of the year.
There's approximately $66,000, $67,000 of ARPA money left, and I request us to take it up.
Yeah, I thought it was about that too, but Summer sent an email that said there's about 90.
Well, that was because of the FAME, one FAME.
So that'll adjust a little bit now since FAME's cut that out.
But the question is, is it possible to take it out of the specialty tax, Summer, if the council wishes to do that?
Yeah, the fire department has money to do that.
So you could take it out of specialty tax because that is earmarked for you, Bob, and then leave the rest in ARPA for something else maybe down the road.
I'd kind of like to stick with ARPA.
It's council's decision. It's your money.
So if I may, Chief Bob, that price that you gave is correct, but it has went up. It's $70 more. It's not that much. But you can add $70 to that total. That was the confirmed number this afternoon when I talked to Mr. Maury, and he contacted the vendor. It did go up a little bit, but I just want to make sure that's out there.
Yeah, that number and stuff came from me from Captain Barlett this morning, so that's where I got those figures.
Okay.
So the motion has been made for 11 sets from ARPA.
Okay, you know what we're voting on? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Down to the mayor, she's not here.
Mayor's not here. Police Dave, do you have an update, please?
This is new. February statistics, calls for service was 388. Officers were 120 traffic citations, 14 non-travels, and seven warnings. For the drug report, it's six active investigations, six new investigations, one undercover guy, one felony arrest, four search warrants. Two grams of methamphetamine were seized, one gram of crack cocaine, and approximately one pound of marijuana, and also $3,000 in cash received as well. Our drug investigator also attended a week-long homicide investigation training this month as well, so.
Make a motion, we take that cash, we pay the government. Help us out here. Help the streets out. Yeah.
Our civil service testing was completed. We actually had a civil service commission meeting prior to this, and we just certified the results, so we'll discuss majority, discussion regarding hiring officers will be in executive session then, discuss that. Our mental health co-responder, I think I mentioned this before, has been chosen to present at the National Co-Responder Convention in Nebraska in June. We just received confirmation this week that our program has also been chosen to present at the National Women in Law Enforcement Conference in Las Vegas in April. So our program is getting a lot of national recognition, which is a good thing. It's very beneficial. It's a very successful program that we've had, and so it's good to see that we're getting some recognition for that. And all those things, all those conferences are covered by our grant, by federal grant, so there'll be no expenses to the borough if any of our officers attend any of these conferences. The mayor wanted me to mention, our last police advisory meeting, we had a suggestion that we look into the police station situation and start a committee to do that. Some of the police advisory board members are interested in participating in that, and that could include council members, whoever wants to be involved in it. But our time's getting short here. At the end of next year, our lease is up to our current building, so we need to make a decision on what we're going to do and where we're going to go. So if there's any questions or objections to that, we just want to know where council stood on that. But we wanted to maybe start a committee to start exploring the different options, and then bring it back to council and present the options that are presented to the committee. So any questions or comment on that?
No, the mayor kind of has to start a committee. Kind of limits the property standards committee, property standards board. The mayor could start up a committee on that, and she is in charge of the police department, so that's not a problem. Just whenever the mayor is actually, she can worry about it. That's not a problem.
So if there's no opposition to it, I'll tell her that we're going to look at the starting...
Yeah, she can do that.
Okay. Everything else I have is for executive session, so that's all for now.
Is there anything on the recreation board?
There's a few things. We had our recreation board meeting, and Lisa was there, Scott was there, and Matt was there. So you guys can jump in if you want to discuss anything other than what I got on here. One thing we talked about is currently at Rec Park, there are no sledding signs. So the kids aren't allowed to use Rec Park for sledding down the hill by the parking lot. So their recommendation to council is they approve the removal of the no sledding signs at Rec Park so kids can still go down there in the winter and sled in that line. But that does take a motion because to take those down.
I make a motion to let you sign this.
All in favor, say aye.
Are we responsible for injured?
I'll let the lawyer answer that one.
I mean, if someone gets injured sledding there, you will probably sue, and your insurance company will cover it. Or defendant.
Best rent injury in the park to get.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
Doesn't matter what they're doing.
Yeah, baseball.
The good thing about, it's a good question, have you? The good thing about where they sled, there's nothing down there at the bottom of the hill. I mean, they could probably get hurt if they fall off, but there's no trees, there's no fences, there's nothing there for them to hit, which is usually what causes most of the injuries.
And they sled there anyway?
Yeah.
Oh, do we have a vote on that?
Get a motion.
All in favor, move them in the sign, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
One of the things that we feel is needed for the community center is AV, audiovisual slash IT support, and I believe we had a generous donation from Phillips. Was it Phillips, Scott?
Yep, that's correct.
So I put TVs in and some audiovisual stuff, and Matt generously, generating his time and help to get that put in at the community center. So that'll be done here. My guess is the next month or so, once we get the stuff in. I don't see any issues moving forward with that, do you Scott?
No.
From the IT side?
Nope.
Cameras for the pool and park area, I do have a request, uh, from the rec board to purchase cameras for around the pool and the, uh, the parking lot, and the lifeguards I talked to are very much in favor of this. And we do have, uh, a request on the next piece for separate pool committee slash budget that would cover that, so I'll go to that next. They, they want, the rec board would like to have some money for the pool, um, to do things such as the cameras, picnic tables, umbrellas, general repairs, things like that. Um, and they would like to get the money out of ARPA, because there is money still left in ARPA. Um, and I don't know what the dollar amount is, at the time we even got the council. I think something like this, you might want to get twenty thousand or something, because the table, because you got other stuff going on down there and as you recall, you can get ten, that's a start.
It was like a more around ten.
That's fine, it's whatever you want.
We have it kind of mapped out where it needs to go.
Alright. So the, the requirement is for a motion for, uh, the pool to receive ten, basically the pool in the budget line item, receive ten thousand dollars from ARPA.
But there's still ARPA money designated for parks and rec, correct?
Yes, but it still takes council's approval, so, yeah, so even then, you still have to approve the money coming out.
I just, I just have one comment on that, so, we did have a meeting with the commissioners and they gave a verbal pledge that they would be willing to donate up to three to five thousand dollars. Now, that money has not come through yet, but, uh, obviously this ten thousand dollars that we're going to suggest taking out of ARPA will be offset by that donation from the county. Uh, we would only use what's needed.
I need a motion to take the money out, ten, ten thousand dollars out of ARPA fund for the.
To make a motion to take ten thousand out of Parks and Rec ARPA money?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Scott Gutshol?
Yes.
Abby? Jim Steele?
Yes.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
We were also working on, we have a draft donation letter, so we're working on donation letters to send out to businesses in the, in the area, and surrounding communities. And the pool DCNR concept for the grant request, which is either gonna be DCED and/or DCNR, we got the, the, I guess you could say the drawing back for the pool design itself. We don't have all the other supporting data back yet. But once I get that back, I'll get that up to the rec board and the rest of council, and then the council can decide what they want to do from there. Possible issue would be, the DCNR grant timeline expires three April, which means we'd have to hire somebody to write the grant, could be Eads, it could be another person we use, et cetera. But that involves a match, it means you have to have buy-in from council for at least a million dollars. So, you'd have to vote on that tonight to have it done and approved by three April. Or you wait till next year and see how your finances go for next year and then talk about it next year. I don't know what you guys want to do.
This is a million for the pool.
Well, the pool itself is two, roughly two point three, two point two, it depends. But we have to have a buy-in match of one to one with DCNR.
But we don't know what we're getting from DCNR.
No, we don't know what you're getting, no.
And if we apply for the grant and we get it, are we committed at that point?
Yes, yes.
But we can write other grants to match?
Yes, if you get DCED, yes.
What happens at the end of that, if you don't get any other grants?
You don't do a project, it's up to you guys, you know, council whether you do the project or not, so.
You'll be, you'll have expended money for your consultant to do the grant.
The study costs thirty-one thousand, DCNR pays fifteen, about fifteen thousand. We just don't have the rest of the data back yet. You know, they're, they're analyzing, you know, the pool usage, the cost, uh, concession stand, all that other data, that they're supposed to be comparing that and sending out data back to us. And one of the results of the study is supposed to be, should we keep the pool open or not, basically. So we're still waiting for that.
And if we delay it until next year, we can still use the.
Oh, yeah, you can still use the study.
The thing that the study guy did say is that structurally, that pool is pretty sound.
Structurally, it's pretty sound, yes.
And it, to build just the pool structure again at this time, it would be like three and a half million dollars, just the structure. I was kind of surprised to hear that.
I'll make a motion to delay until next year.
Second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Did you cover the donation requests or letters, do we need permission to do that?
No, we don't need permission, I can just do that.
We can just do it.
Whenever we get the study, when you talk about hiring the pool management side, I'll get with her and the, and the assistants, and we'll get those going. Anything covered that yet?
Alright. Oh, Scott Norr contacted the borough and requested that the borough sign a quit clean deed for an old railroad siding that apparently runs between some of his buildings down, down on the south. So, quit clean deed is essentially, you're saying, whatever right title of interest we have, if any, we're giving to you. They're also getting, who else is signing it, I think the railroad or somebody, uh, they don't know who owns this railroad siding, it's a, kind of like a problem with their title. The borough isn't really giving anything up, other than whatever interest they might have. They're also getting it from the MCIDC. I think it's just confusing, old railroad titles are very difficult to trace, because these railroads would always, you know, wind up going bankrupt and people would take over them or whatever, so you're just, uh, saying, if we have any interest in this railroad siding, we're giving it up to, uh, New Orleans Warehouse Services, Inc.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, a motion to authorize the president and necessary officers to execute the quit clean deed.
Any motion?
You do need.
I need a motion, somebody has to. Have a motion.
How much ground is it?
It's almost Scott's ground, so it doesn't matter.
Oh, it is. Yeah, the borough's home, it's on his property, alright.
Uh, it's a half acre, point five, one six acres.
I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
What's it for now? Uh, down, down a, uh, New Orleans Warehouse, there's an old railroad siding that is, kind of runs between their, their buildings. They don't know who owns it, they think maybe the borough might have an interest, or Mifflin County Industrial Authority, so they've asked both those entities to give up quit clean deeds to release whatever right title and interest, uh, they may have in the property. I mean, it's not property that the borough has exercised any control over or does anything with, it's kind of like within the whole warehouse complex. They've been do, they've been doing work down there to clean up the title. I think the borough gave them another similar deed years ago.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Now you just have executive session, too.
Well, chapter one ninety-two, septic ordinance, I got it under you, you'll have to get it to ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Last year, I guess, I had drafted an ordinance regarding, there are still a few septic systems in the borough.
How many, Kate, four or five?
Four.
Four?
Four septic systems. There's really nothing that controls anything about them, so this ordinance is just to, uh, regulate septic systems and require, uh, routine pumping and things like that, things that should be done, since they are here. Hopefully, you know, eventually we'll be able to get rid of them all. A lot of times, if there's a big sewer project, one of the things DEP will want done is, uh, you know, getting rid of these septic systems and they'll kick in some money for people, so. But, yeah, um, I don't, I don't know, what are, what are we doing with that? Are we sending that to all ordinance, or? Oh, you're right.
It already went through law ordinance, it's just permission to advertise, basically.
Okay. Permission, yeah. So it'll be advertised for, for April?
If council approves, yeah.
Yeah.
If council's able to approve it to advertise.
I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the advertising.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
New and unfinished business, number one, dumpsters, the borough is short dumpsters, we need to replace the ones we have that are all beat up. There's a quote right now for seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen, and the money is in the budget for these, we just need approval to purchase.
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, the next thing is the Portonoff Tax Collection. That has already been to council, back to L and O, back to, uh, council now for approval. So let me pull this up, just so you guys can see what we're dealing with here. Uh, council meeting, it's up to March, Portonoff Tax Firm. So the first thing you're gonna approve is the contract. Oh, why does it keep doing this, I did this yesterday, remember this, oh, there you go. Alright, so the contract is already been reviewed by our solicitor, he said it was good to go. Uh, so we just need to approve this contract to move forward. The second thing we gotta approve, and it's all the same firm, is the resolution. Basically says that, uh, what we're doing, it goes to county, says as of twenty twenty-four, that these people are responsible to collect our delinquent taxes for twenty twenty-three. And then the ordinance permission to advertise the ordinance. And these are the fees that, that are attached to the ordinance for delinquent taxes.
And this will go into affecting the next tax year?
Correct, it'll be for collecting late taxes for twenty twenty-three. What's that, Matt?
Um, so this is absolutely no cost to the borough.
Absolutely no cost to the borough.
Right, the ordinance that you'd be adopting is, is basically a cost and fee schedule that would be assessed against the, the delinquent taxpayers. That's how, you know, that's how their business gets, makes a profit.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, in favor of passing this, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Rec pool, Rec Park pool funding has already been approved earlier for ten thousand from ARPA. Handicap parking space renewal fee, this went to actually L and O, to council, back to L and O, so it's back to council, which is normal process. Basically, the council would need to vote on whether they want, uh, us to generate a, a new ordinance. That's an ordinance, Mark, right, it would be cost and fees, an ordinance. Then we would implement a handicap parking space renewal fee of twenty-five dollars annually. The cost right now for someone to request a handicap spot is fifty dollars, the cost to borough, five hundred dollars to put one in. But over time, people move, people pass away sadly, et cetera. So this is a way for us to recoup some of that money, but also to allow us to maintain accountability of the handicap parking spaces in town. So we would like to have approval from council to generate this ordinance for the handicap parking space renewal fee for twenty-five dollars.
Amen. Second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
So, bring a draft ordinance.
Yeah, next time, yeah. L and O, wherever you get your chance, Mark. Okay. Number five and number six involve an ordinance, we've talked to Mark about this. First thing is a streets committee abolishment. The second one, number six, is streets parking board establishment. And then number seven is a parking authority board establishment. So we'll do these one by one. Streets committee abolishment. If we enact the streets parking board establishment, the streets committee process, uh, operations, et cetera, will be covered under that board, so you don't need the streets committee. So we would need a vote to, to abolish the streets committee to move forward with the streets parking, uh, board establishment.
Kim, I'd like to make a motion that we table all of this until we have the session, that all the councils at, and we address it with Michael Buffington.
Okay. All three?
We have two people here from the floor.
Well, they're here.
Would you like to speak?
Basically, I think, uh, I guess we want to know why this is being done so quick. We're right in the process, Geisinger, School of Nursing is coming in. We're working with Geisinger with the parking lots. We just want to continue to make this go through before anything's abolished. That's all we're.
Is that Mark Lawson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark, uh, I, I agree, I think, I think we just need to, uh, uh, as my vision was, to, to table this. I talked to Mike Buffington a great deal, uh, two days ago. And I think until everybody's on the same page, I think we just need to table this and, and hold it for another month. Uh, I did talk to Mike, he's gonna attend the, uh, session that's coming up, I believe on the third, where everybody will be around the table.
I'll second the motion to table.
He, he doesn't need a motion, we just take no action.
Yeah, we're alright.
No action, no action, so I'll, I'll mark those three, uh, for the, the session there, Matt.
Thank you, Kim.
Alright, so, six, five, six, seven. Alright, number eight, sewer vent cover for I and I mitigation, I think that's on here, sewer vent cover, I've got it in my notes. The, uh, the codes office has been upgrading our codes based on numerous things, and one of the things is the I and I issue we have. So, they've got some new covers, um, that are great for preventing I and I between the house and the curb. And they've already sold, I don't know, Kate, like ten?
I think eight.
Last week or two, I mean, I'm lost.
The last two weeks.
So, this has been to the law and ordinance, they said bring it to council for approval to develop an ordinance on this, so that's why it's here. They would like council's approval to update a new ordinance for the, the sewer vent covers to prevent I and I, because of what we're doing with DEP.
Can you try to do something, it wouldn't be that we're making people rip off their sidewalks and replace them, it would just be as they're being repairs, maybe replace them in their sidewalk to get rid of the square vents, have a bunch of holes in them that water, rainwater, ground rocks getting down in. The new cap prevents that from happening. And it looks better in the street, so they're solid, they're cast iron, we're not gonna break, they're heavier, so kids can't lift them up and shove stuff down in here sewer vents. So people aren't getting clogged as much, nobody's shoving soda bottles down in there and causing sewer backups. Yeah, it's just to prevent a bunch of issues, but we do have them in the office, actually, we don't right now, because we sold out of them today. But normally, we have some in the office, so if a plumber comes in and says, hey, I need a sidewalk permit, I have to repair a sewer line, we're saying, well, what affects the sewer line, these are the vent caps we're recommending, and they're just buying them, left and right, it's working. And I'm sure Tom can attest to how much water is going down these vent traps that we currently use.
Number one, Rob. How, how to sort of work it, and then try and get it wrapped together?
I think it's approved. We need a motion to move forward with the ordinance.
I'll make the motion to move forward with it.
Second? I need a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, pool attendance rates, I'm gonna see if I got these on here.
The burner ones.
Yeah, the one that has the.
The burner ones with the five dollars. The decrease from six to five.
Right. Bottom line is, the pool rates were going from six dollars to five, and the, the group rates or family rates, those packages were gonna be cheaper than Burnham by ten dollars per package. I'm trying to find one here so you can see it.
Was it five or ten?
It was ten, specifically ten. It was ten, specifically ten. Now, I don't know if I got it on here. But that's okay, it's still approved, we know what it is, and we can get it out for that.
I need a motion to adjust the rates.
I'll make the motion to adjust the pool rates.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright.
No.
I know, Darren, you, you've got the emails, I was already sent to the council, so you had it. Number eleven. Where am I at here? Number ten? Twelve, thirteen, fourteen are all executive session. Number fifteen. County DAV parking space, let me pull this up. What's that?
Just had a look this way.
Oh, yeah. So the county has a DAV van out there that they use to drive veterans around for their appointments, which is a good thing. Um, they're requesting council and the police chief authorize a specific parking place for them on the Borough Street over by the annex. I asked him why the county didn't reserve a spot for them in, in their numerous parking lots, and they said the county doesn't deem it priority enough to have one of those spots. So he wants the borough to, borough council and the police chief, because it takes both according to Borough Code, to approve a reserved spot in front of the annex. I would say if you do approve this, I would say approve it with, with the stipulation that they install and pay for the sign instead of us. But you give permission to use the spot.
They're not willing to give them a spot in the annex parking lot?
Nope.
I mean, they have their own parking lot.
That's what I said, they use, they use not. They're not high enough priority for them to do it. And they said they don't wanna keep parking up on top of the hill because it's too far for people. They want it for advertising, because they want people to see. It's a good question, Dave. They want it for advertising because they want people to see they have veteran services, you know, at the county. And so, since it's all fancy painted car, they want it near the annex. But they won't give them a spot inside the annex as a reserved spot.
Well, I spoke with the president of this organization yesterday, and they are a newly formed veterans association.
What's it, what is it, which one is it? Which, which organization?
The one we're talking about right here.
The DAV?
Well, they, they have a new organization out there. Okay, they put a committee on, which I don't think is recognized by the county. And they're the ones that's voluntarily transporting the veterans to the hospitals or doctors.
Well, my mom does this at home, she does this a lot, she loves doing that.
So I am very.
Is it the one at the church? Is that the one at the church? There's one at the church every Sunday, a veterans organization, it's usually pretty busy. Is that those guys doing it?
That's more I could tell you.
Okay.
The band's been at the county annex for a year.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah. So it's a good thing for the veterans, just do you want to authorize a spot and have them pay for the sign?
Yes, I would make a motion to authorize the spot.
I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion we move forward with that.
With the stipulation they supply the sign and.
Yeah, they supply a sign.
Yeah, what's a sign cost?
Well, for us.
How much does a sign cost?
For us to put a handicap spot in, it's about five hundred bucks. So them, if they paint it and stuff, it could be about the same.
So are they looking for a handicap spot?
No, that's like a special reserve. If they just want, if they want a special reserve spot with the sign. The sign's probably a couple hundred bucks, that's up to them.
Would sound like it's too far for them to go.
It's for our veterans, I'd say we just waive the, waive the fee for that, I really do. It's for our veterans, come on, guys. That's my motion, waive the fee.
Well, there's no fee for us. It's just they're gonna pay for the sign.
No, but you wanna, you don't, but they wanna charge them. I say we put the sign in at no cost to them.
That, that's up to council, I hope you guys wanna do it. Follow me.
I, I make the motion that we move forward with approving the parking space request for the DAV. I would assume that the county would absorb the cost for the sign.
Well, they got a thirty-five, forty-five million dollar a year budget, you would think they'd be able to come up with it.
If they don't, if they refuse to buy the sign, we'll buy the sign, is the motion that I'll make.
I will, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Thanks for your comments about the veterans, Matt, I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Alright, let's see what the next thing is. Sewer rate discussion, we have to vote to discuss this because it was added to the agenda after it was advertised.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the sewer rates.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Time, so let me pull the numbers up, I think it's in December.
While you're pulling those numbers up, I do have a question here. And I'm very unfamiliar with this sewer rates and how it operates. But I was told, and maybe I'll get Caitlin to explain a little bit of this to me, that it's costing us money, or we're losing money for the simple fact that some of the municipalities that we serve are not charging their customers the rates we are. What, what's with that, is that? It's like an intermunicipal agreement, supposedly the Act of nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen eighteen, this agreement?
We're working on that.
What's rates you're talking about in there, Bob? Because I'm gonna go read that again.
I think he's referring to, regarding all the package fees and how we need to look into the agreement and make sure, rework it so that.
Correct.
Getting dairy's capacity fees.
Correct, that is an issue, Bob, that's on my.
I think that's what he's referring to.
Sorry.
That's not this.
And suppose.
It's a separate issue, but it's a valid issue, it's on my wall, it's on my to-do wall in there, to work through the law and ordinance committee. But you're absolutely right, Bob, it's in there.
And suppose that'd be like a hundred and forty thousand dollar a year approximately savings for us, or?
If, it could, yes, if, if we get it enacted, but some of it's already in the past because they've already built their housing developments and stuff, and they never paid the fees because it was.
Okay, that's what was referred to, I guess. And that's being worked on now.
Yeah, it's working on it. So in fact, I'm reading it in there again now, making, making notes for a meeting coming up.
So to provide a little bit of context, while I wanted to discuss this, there's a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar shortfall on wastewater collections. And if we carry that, that loss or that deficit from this year into next year, then it snowballs, it has a snowball effect. Now, that three hundred thousand turns into six hundred thousand the next year. You're, you're drawing down from your capital reserves. So my question is, what would be the suggested rates of adjustment? Or adjustments we would need to make to make up this deficit? For wastewater collections?
Who are you looking at? Lucas or me?
You.
My rates are up there.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, that's up there.
The green is, is reasonable to request rates to change. And actually, part, it's made out of two parts, and one part would actually be reduced and the other increased. And those, those big, the green. The rates in red are the, if we actually had it where we could recoup everything and we're right on track. That's how. Where we actually, what we need, that we can't actually change.
My, my next question is, we have three billing quarters left in the year. What's the latest we can make a decision on the adjustment rates?
By the end of this month. Bill's the month of the other month. For the next.
The next bill.
Yeah. And this, and these rates are as if it would have started at the beginning of the year. So we're already missing a quarter or.
Yeah, we missed a quarter already.
Lucas, have you guys had any insight in this? I know you've been working on it.
I know Steve, um, helped lay out a little bit this last year, but we hadn't really dug into it much this spring, um, since you guys had raised the rates the end of last year. And I think you carried through that one-on-one number, uh, for first quarter twenty-four. But we, we have not dove into this since.
I knew you worked on it, but I didn't know where you were at. So I, I guess what I'm looking for is maybe Summer, if you could maybe water this down a little bit for us. Right now, what's the average rate for example, what somebody's paying now?
If you say an average user is a twelve thousand gallon user, then currently they're paying the bottom line of a one hundred and fifty dollars a quarter. And this adjustment will make it one fifty-five. If you say, I mean, some users weigh less than that, some users more, at seventeen thousand gallons, right now they're paying about one seventy-two and we raise it to one eighty-two.
So it's, it's really marginal.
Yeah, between five to ten dollars a quarter.
And if we make that change, we fix the deficit problem. Well, we recoup three quarters of that.
Yeah, that'll help, that, and that will adjust, it's actually bringing more into collections, which is our internal lines issue, and a little bit, uh, less into treatment plant, which is already, it's being funded though.
So I guess I'd like to hear from Ains, what's your opinion on this?
Too much information at this point for us to grasp as well, late, late, late today.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to get with Summer to find out how this is, you know, moving forward. And what, what are the current rates and how they match up to the projected.
Right. I think she has that represented on the spreadsheet, but I agree, it warrants discussion, but the rates are marginally different. Not that much difference, really. I'd like to hear other opinions around the table. The longer you wait on this, you get a snowball effect, naturally.
I didn't hear what you wanna raise, five dollars or ten dollars or?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, it goes by usage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the base, the base figure right now is one-on-one seventy-four per one thousand gallons. If you only use one thousand gallons, you're, you're charging one-on-one seventy-four. I'm actually proposing that rate would be, that would go down to ninety-four seventy-six if you were a one thousand gallon user. So, I mean, the two, it's, nobody sees two rates on their bills, but it's made out of two rates.
Oh, I can't see it.
So on the, on the cost and fee, currently it's four dollars and thirty-nine cents per one thousand gallons. I'm proposing to raise that to five dollars and forty-four cents. And the treatment plant charge is ninety-seven thirty-five. I'm proposing to reduce that to eighty-nine thirty-two. And reducing, I'm, I'm proposing to reduce that so that we can raise our collections charge a little higher because that's where we're originally on that handicap. The other tab on there shows the, I mean, it's a, it's a lot of information, but the other tab shows, uh, the rate down, yeah.
This tab here?
And, yeah, and the yellow there, the yellow is the proposed rates on the left. The ones on the right are, if we were covering all of our costs, but they're just out there. So, yeah, the ones on the left are the proposed rates, right above, the yellow is what it is now. It's four thirty, it's four thirty-nine right now. I'm saying a change to five forty-four, and the ninety-seven thirty-five to eighty-nine thirty-two. So combined is the bottom number at the bottom, so ninety-four seventy-six.
And you're saying, for an average user with twelve thousand gallons, the cost will only go up?
Five dollars a quarter.
Five dollars a quarter.
And this is, and, yeah, and this is in no means getting us what we need, but it's an adjustment, last, last adjustment, we were going heavy towards the treatment plant to get some money in that reserve. And, but that was before we had all our internal issues and we lost everything we had in our, for our, uh, collections account. So this is to adjust, we can't raise them too high, so we need more money in our reserve account and for our internal lines to, to support the cost for these emergencies we've had in town.
So the nineteen eighty-two required reserve is a hundred and sixty thousand. I checked the latest numbers today, and with inflation, that means we should have five hundred and fourteen thousand. That we're required to have according to the agreement, not should have, we're required to have five hundred and fourteen thousand at all times.
Right. So the new rate is five dollars and forty-four cents per thousand gallons? Correct?
Five forty-four, yeah.
I make a motion to move forward with it.
Go ahead.
My fault. Um, the only question I have is, the treatment plant fee, is that the fee we would then charge the neighboring municipalities as well? For that same EDU?
We don't charge the same fee, we, because it's, uh, it's the cost that's in, by their percentage. So they're a percentage of the total budgeted cost for the plant. That's what the, what it breaks down for us by, I don't mean years, you know.
So we're not essentially, we would not be reducing? Okay.
No.
Yeah. So again, I mean, I guess for the public that's here, my concern is we have to stop this shortfall that we have in wastewater collections, or else it becomes a snowball effect year over year that keeps eating out of our capital reserves. And eventually drains your money out of capital reserves.
If you see the treasurer report, the, the wastewater treatment plant does have four hundred and sixty thousand in the wastewater treatment capital reserve. So it's, it's, it's getting there, but the collections has nothing. So anything that happens within our town limits, we are.
There's no money.
We're on the general level because we have no backup to reserve. Because we used it all for the emergencies last year.
Yep. I make a motion to move forward with the new rate adjustment for wastewater collections at five forty-four per one thousand gallons.
Well, you're gonna have to amend your, your ordinance.
So it's gonna be the same for, I've died, like, what, I haven't. I've died in borough?
No, this, this is only interim.
Only inside borough.
Well, what Mark's saying is this isn't cost and fee slash ordinance, so you'd have to make the motion to basically advertise it?
Yeah, advertise, change to it.
Change to it, and then they approve it in April.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, the figure, we're changing it too.
Five dollars and forty-four cents per one thousand gallons. And I don't, I don't know if you heard, Mark, but I believe you said we need to advertise.
Yeah, you need to change the ordinance.
Yeah, I kinda figured, yeah, okay, thank you.
So I guess I'll make a motion to advertise and change the ordinance to make the adjustment to wastewater collections.
And we're charging what a gallon, or what a gallon now?
Four ninety-seven.
Four ninety-seven, now goes to five forty-four. Yeah, it's minimal, but it, it stops the bleeding, so.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second?
Second? Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A call.
We'd like a roll call.
Yep.
Bob Moreland?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Scott Gutsho?
Yes.
Heavy?
Yeah.
Jim Still?
Yes.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number seventeen's already been approved.
What about the other three?
What other rate?
That was only the, the one, what about the other? The adjustment, the ninety-seven thirty-five down to eighty-nine thirty-two.
I was.
That would be what we expect for the beginning of this.
Well, on such a pitch?
I don't have any, so.
Well, Lucas, did you wanna say something?
No, I, I mean, I think that was your intent.
Yes.
Utilizing the rates that, yeah, the, the rate package.
Right.
Yeah, he just called out the.
Do we need to adjust it? Do we need to adjust it? Just the, the motion, the vote for the rate.
The package versus just.
The way I've seen it done in the past, you could just vote to approve what's on the screen. The, the data that's presented to council.
Alright, yeah. I'll make a motion.
Because you're gonna have to do it.
Yeah.
When, when it comes back again, so you, so what you do is you vote to advertise the data.
To advertise.
Yes.
And then change yours. Yes. So I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Against it?
Back up the agenda. Alright, we already approved number seventeen. Number eighteen, we need to, okay, this doesn't involve, uh, money or a contract, does it? It's just voting to approve the, the Southside Lot Consolidation, Mark, so do we need to vote on that or no?
Oh, yeah, that's a subdivision, subdivision.
Right, so we gotta vote on discussion or?
You can, there's no money involved.
That's right, Tom, okay. So we need the Southside Car Wash, that's already been through the Planning Commission and stuff, we just need to sign the documents. However, we need approval for the Southside Car Wash Lot Consolidation, However, we need approval for the Southside Car Wash Lot Consolidation, and it's already been through the planning commission, it just has to come through here for approval, and then we get it signed.
Chad Mav.
What? Did you say Matt?
Chad Mav.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Number nineteen, the library school pass request. We get a letter from the library, and I don't, I don't think we need to vote to discuss this, Mark, but they sent me a letter like they do every year, and they're asking for some donations of free passes for the kids at the library that like win reading competitions and stuff. Last year, I just gave them twenty-five month business cards and signed free pass, and they passed it out to the kids. Just recommend, request permission to do that again this year because it's good for the kids up there for reading and stuff, so.
Amen.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
I'll take care of it. Okay, the last thing, this doesn't involve any money either as far as contract, but this person here, two oh one North Green Handicap, is requesting a parking space be installed. And I got, and I always show the council pictures of the area and stuff, so you see what we're talking about. The house here on the right, you can see there's no handicap parking spots on this side of the street at all, or the house. This is the house, there's nothing here. I think that's her park, I checked the license plate. And then anywhere on the street, there's nothing on the street either. So there's nowhere else as a handicap spot to park. So she's requesting a temporary handicap spot for that spot, uh, space in front of the house. I'd show you the, her request, but I don't do that because HIPAA requirements, I don't do that. Me and Ben went and checked it, and we supported it. We just need approval to put it in. They've already paid their fees.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think that's it, except for executive session, and we'll come back and go through the rest of the list.
Do we have any public comments before we go to executive session?
I just wanted to thank, uh, the committee for table it for a little while till we get things situated, we can all get together, get it worked out.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
I said, we've been doing this for.
You're not about to talk about.
They've booked us off for a year. They don't come to a single.
You're going to get that letter, you're going to get that letter typed up to the home center about the changes.
Chief thirty, whatever it is. Am I going to do it? Yes.
Yeah.
It's going to be done tonight? No, I'll get it done, Bob. I'm not sending it to you.
Hey, Bob. I'm working on a laptop in your office.
Alright, sounds good.
Get your hook up.
Okay, does it come with Windows for dummies?
Hey, Bob, I'm working on your office. Why don't you get your laptop?
Thanks, you, thanks for everything.
See ya.
Alright, we're on our executive session. Welcome.